So. Good evening, Lake. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the October 1st, 2024 City Council meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Go-to webinar transcripts of this council meeting are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple App or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Transcript and Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online by phone at the phone number printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov, or in person here in the main auditorium in the South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If anywhere received, they will be noted for the record, and when we get to the public comment period. This meeting, it is being recorded, and by participating, you're giving your permission to be televised. This meeting will be broadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 AM, and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 PM, and archived for viewing the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov. And now, we will proceed to the pleasure allegiance and the invocation, then the roll call. Please stand for the pleasure legion led by council member Ruth Lowe, and then please, then please remain standing for the invocation by Sheikh Naman by the Institute of Knowledge.
Please rise, face the flag, hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. In the name of God, the most beneficent and the most merciful. Dear God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people and creation need. See the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat them who creation deserves. And finally, oh God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this of you as your servants who are in need of you, confident in your goodness, love, and mercy. Amen. May God bless us all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. City Clerk Santana, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
I'm here.
Councilmember Lowe?
Here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Here.
Mayor Liu?
Here. Thank you so much, City Clerk Santana. The city council met in a closed session earlier today, starting at 5:30 PM. There are no reportable actions. And City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. The agenda is hereby approved. Today, we have no presentations. City, City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
No additional reports this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. We'll move over to the public comment section. Public comments, it is a time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for the members of the public to directly address this council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest, not on the agenda, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments, pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to the public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no actions on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted speaker cards first, then City Clerk Santana will call those callers joining on the teleconference. Who may wish to speak under public comments? I have received two speaker cards. The first one, it is Ms. Cynthia Yu of the Diamond Bar Library. Ms. Cynthia Yu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. Joining us this Thursday at 4:00 PM for classics, for classical opera for kids. This engaging family program will bridge classical music with art. Attendees will learn the basics of music and conducting, and even enjoy the mini opera. Come join the adventure in Bookland, a brand-new book club for kids, where we will meet monthly to discuss books and participate in journaling, crafting, or games. This month, we'll meet on Friday, October 4th, at 4:00 PM, and the book selection is Flora and Ulysses, The Illuminated Adventure by Kate DiCamillo. In celebration of Hispanic Carriage Month, please pick up a take-home key at the library to create Guatemalan Berylates, which are traditional kites that are an integral part of the country's cultural and religious traditions. The take-home keys is for adults. For more information about library program and service, please visit our website, awcountylibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cynthia Yu. And next, we have Mr. Aaron Scheller of Dash for Hope.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and city council members, I just can't say thank you enough for coming to the event, the proclamation, and honoring my wife and myself at the event. Just wanted to say thank you. Dash for Hope was, for us, a giant success, and having you guys be a part of that just really showed your support, and we really appreciate that. And, and Ryan and his daughter even came out, and it was just, you know, it's, it's fun being part of this community, and I get to work here, and it's, it's interesting when we hold an event like this and how people respond, and the community responded really well. And the event actually raised almost, almost $16,000 for, for the event. And for a first-time event, I can say that that is a success, and just wanted to thank you guys for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Scheller.
I don't, I don't want him to feel bad, but let's be real clear. We were there for Shannon, okay?
Yay for Shannon. Thank you. Okay. City Clerk Santana, well, is there anybody that's here in, in the audience would like to address the council? Please submit a speaker card. And we're now, City Clerk Santana, there, were there any emails received?
No, Mr. Mayor, there were no emails submitted for public comment tonight, and there are no callers on the line right now.
Thank you, City Clerk Santana. Now, once again, if anyone would like to, to make public comment, address the council, seeing none, we will now close public comment. We'll now move to the schedule of future events and the consent calendar. City, City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of upcoming events, and then proceed to the consent calendar?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On the scheduled events, the Coffee with the Cop will be held on Saturday morning, October 4th, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM at S&amp;J Grand Cafe on Golden Springs and Brea Canyon in the Plaza at Diamond Creek. There will be a community emergency response team training to be held October 4th through October 6th at the Diamond Bar Walnut Sheriff's Station on Valley Boulevard. It's not too late to sign up for these classes. There's a special joint city council and planning commission meeting on Tuesday, October 8th, starting at 5:00 PM in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall, and the regular planning commission meeting will follow, starting at 6:30 PM. The State of the City Address will be held on Wednesday, October 9th, starting at 6:30 PM at the Diamond Bar Center. This is a free event, and the doors open at 5:30. There'll be a COVID and flu vaccine clinic on Tuesday, October 15th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Diamond Bar Center, and our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 15th, starting at 6:30 PM here in the AQMB Auditorium.
One quick question. On the Coffee with the Cop, it's usually on Saturday. Do we mean October 5th, not 4th? Because 4th is a Friday.
Is it the 5th?
Saturday, right? Okay.
Saturday morning. My apologies.
It's okay. Okay, thank you.
We got that one great, didn't we? Apologize for that. So, Saturday morning, add good time donuts. It is Coffee with the Cop. Thank you. On the consent calendar this evening, we have approval of the September 17th regular city council meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated September 11th through September 24th, approval of the First Amendment to the agreement with FRJ and Associates for the administration of the city's home improvement program, and approval of an agreement with PeopleSpace for purchase and installation of modular office furniture at the Diamond Bar Center, including an additional appropriation from the building facility and maintenance fund to fully fund the project. And that concludes the consent calendar for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Would any of my colleagues like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull item number 5.3, Mayor, and I make a motion to approve the remainder.
Okay. Councilmember Lowe is pulling 5.3, and, and motion to, for the rest of the items.
I'll second the motion to approve the rest of the items.
And the second from Councilmember Chow. City Clerk Santana, please call for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes. Thank you so much. That's, Councilmember Lowe.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick question on number 5.3. Not sure I was reading that report correctly. The item is for the consulting agreement for the administration of the home improvement program, and the amount that we have, by the way, this is item number 5.3, it's on page 29 of our package, but our total, total amount that is being administered is $649,080. So, our, is, our contract was for 120. Is it going to 130, or is it 130 plus 120 for a total of 250 for the consulting agreement?
That is correct. It's currently $120,000. We're asking to add $130,000 for the condominium home ownership, or home improvement program, for a total of $250,000. This is the same consultant that we use for the single-family home improvement program, and with the permanent local housing allocation funds that we receive, will want to use the same consultant for the multifamily condo, owner condominium home improvement program that the council previously approved, you know, several months back.
I thought I read in the report that, that the consulting contract to administer the program can't exceed 20% of the total contract.
That is.
Yeah, so how does, the 250 is way more than 20% of the 649.
The, each individual contract, up to $30,000, would be the 20% cap. So, they, based upon what we have budgeted for that program, that would be the maximum that the contract would achieve. But individual projects would not be more than 20% of that loan amount.
Well, is our total amount that is, that we can give out is 650? 650, 649, 80?
I'd have to confirm. Do we have Greg Gumben, Gumben on the line? Maybe he can speak to that?
Because.
Well, and also, yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. So, the $250,000 includes the current cap on the use of CDBG funds for the home improvement program, and with the additional PLHA funds, 20% of that would be 130,000. So, we're, we're amending FRJ's contract so that they can process loans on behalf of the city that are funded with either PLHA monies or CDBG monies. So, that, so the, the 20% of the, the CDBG monies was the, was estimated to be 20% of the total loans written during the five-year period of the contract, and because we already know what we will be receiving in PLHA funding up through fiscal year 2025, 26, or I'm sorry, 2024, 25, we're, we're just adding 20% of that total. So, that's how you get the 250.
But 250 is in excess of 20% of the 649, right? Is that amount, a different amount now? It's no longer 649?
The 649 is a total of three years that we receive, we, of the PLHA funds. What's not included is the $100,000 in CDBG funds that we're using, and maybe that's, you know, part of the confusion, you know, but we, you know, in any event, we're not able to spend more than 20% of each individual loan amount, but over the five-year contract, that's what those totals, if we were to max out, would add up to. I don't know if that helps?
I'm quite confused now. My, my concern is this, is that if I'm looking at 649,000 for the total loan amount, and we're giving 250 to the consultant to administer it, then we're only, how much are we really lending out? That seems.
Of that 649, only 130 are going to the consultant from that pot of, of money. The other $120,000 is in CDBG funds, and we have a separate pot of money that we received from CDBG over a five-year period. We historically have been allocating, I think, about $100,000 each year. So, 20% of that is, is, you know, $20,000 a year times five, and that's, you know, gets us, you know, that $120,000. Right? Is that, Greg, is that the math?
If I could, if it said another, another way, the, the current unamended contract accounts for an estimated $600,000 in CDB funds allocated to the home improvement program. So, 20% of that is going to be $120,000. Now, we're adding the 649 or so of the PLHA program. So, really, the total amount, the total pot is over $1.2 million in funding that we can allocate to the home improvement program, and therefore, the, the, the amount that could potentially go to the consultant is 20% of that. So, it's $120,000 plus $130,000.
So, okay, so the, the total pot of 1.2 million, that's nowhere in our report today? That's like new information?
It's, it may, it's in the, the, the contract amount already sets the ceiling, not to exceed $120,000. So, yeah, you're correct. The staff report may not have hearkened back to the original contract, which was the basis for the original amount of $120,000, but that, that what is the base amount of the contract. We're required to amend the contract to allow the consultant to process loans using PLHA monies, and so just focusing on that, that's, that's what's in the staff report.
My understanding is that there was a previous contract with an amount of 120,000 already. So, we receive additional funding of this 690-something dollars. So, we add another 20% of this funding to the original contract, and total 250,000.
Right, I get that. I, I get, I get that. But the previous contract, the amount of 600,000, that's nowhere in the report. But we have a, we, we don't talk about the previous 600,000, but we do talk about the previous 20%, which is 120,000. That's why it's confusing. And, and anybody who's, who's reading this would find our decision here quite confusing. Would it be possible to redo this item and bring it back next year, next week? Are we, are we in a time crunch here with this item?
If, if the council, if it's the pleasure of the council, we can certainly continue it. Greg, I don't know if there's any applications that are pending this contract approval, or if there's, if, if we hold off another two weeks.
We can, we, we can probably do that. I, I don't believe there are any pending loans to be written.
So, that would be an option for the council if you wanted to continue this until your next meeting?
That's my request, that we, we clarify this report so that whoever is reading our minutes and reading our report can easily understand what we're doing, and that we are in compliance with the 20%. I don't want somebody to say, hey, you guys approved $250,000 worth of consulting fees, and you're only putting out 649,000. It seems like the consulting is getting more money than, than what it, this design, what this money is designed for, and, and that's not what we're doing, but we want to make that clear.
Yeah, I'll support that. Thank you.
Do we need a vote on this?
So, technically, you don't need a vote to continue this particular item, because it's not a public hearing, but if you want, you have a first, second, if you want to just take the roll, might as well have a vote to continue.
Voting to extend it?
To continue it to the next meeting.
Extend it.
Continue to the next meeting, and we understand that you want additional information on the original contract on the staff report.
And the language on, on, on the agenda.
Right, so that it's, it's clearly, is easily understandable.
Okay, since we have a first and a second, City Clerk Santana, can we call for a vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowe. And that completes the items, consent calendar. Okay, that will take us to the council comment and subcommittee reports and meeting attendance. We will start with Councilmember Andrew Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. Just so, one quick report. I did attend the SGV COG directs meeting, directors meeting, I think, two weeks ago. There was an, an action item that I wanted to report back on. So, there's a Montebello grade separation project. It was being held up a little bit, because there was a, a business on the corner of Montebello Boulevard and, I believe, Olympic Boulevard. That's in negotiation with the COG. So, the COG, council, general, general counsel advised the directors to take action. So, we, we voted on a, what do you call that? A letter of?
Resolution of intent to take the eminent domain.
Yeah. What's it called?
It's a resolution of intent.
Okay, that, yeah. So, the board voted to approve that, so that we can move the project forward, but at the same time, the COG will continue negotiation with the business owner. So, hopefully, we won't have to go that route. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Andrew Chow. Thank you, Councilmember Andrew Chow. And Councilmember Ruth Laub.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Deputy Scheller, you and your wife just did an amazing job at the Kid Cancer Event. All of us showed up, as you noted, and we're just really grateful that you put that on and grateful that the families came out. Really nice atmosphere and lots of supporting community within that group. And congratulations on the successful fundraising. And I hope that that's something that you will continue. I know lots of folks are talking about that. So, that'll be a good thing. Last Sunday, it was early in the morning. I was coming back from church, and I thought, oh, I'll swing by the donut shop. And I saw some deputy police cars over by the ice cream shop and the Round Table Pizza. This was at 8:00 in the morning, and, well, guess what? The windows were broken at Round Table Pizza, as well as the doors and windows over at 31 Flavor, the ice cream. And there was a police car there writing up the report. In my memory, this is the second, the second break-in for this year at that center. And just, I don't think that we, that's just not right. And we really can do better, and we really should do better. I don't know if the previous one, I believe there was some videotape. I don't know what the investigation shows on this most recent break-in. But I think in that center, we have some pretty good cameras there. So, I would just really encourage our city to work on the business-public safety aspect of that for our city. This kind of, this kind of burglary, it's really such a horrible crime. And imagine being a businessperson. You have to put up with all of that, plus the trauma, and you lost your business a couple days at least, and to start all over. It's just, I just want our city to do better in providing public safety to our businesses as well as our residents. So, that's my lead-in to another issue that I was made aware of this week. And I think a lot of us have heard about the various lawsuits from the state attorney general against the sheriff's department with deputy gangs and other civil rights violations, and that's a good thing. But it's my understanding that the parties, that's the attorney general as well as the sheriff's department, are working on a consent decree to reform whatever that is the problem with the policing up until that point. And that's a good thing. I support that as well. The issue to me is that this negotiating and in working out the consent decree is not open to cities and other stakeholders. And we, as well as other cities, are stakeholders because we contract with the sheriff, and we pay for their services. A major part of our budget goes to that. And it just doesn't seem prudent for us to sit back and wait to see what comes out of those negotiations. Because if the negotiations, it's my understanding the negotiations would impact our public safety. And as I mentioned earlier, we already have a public safety problem, not just in Diamond Bar, but, you know, in the whole state, as a matter of fact. And so, what I am asking for is that we look into that and ask for a transparency, as well as some representation at these negotiations as they're crafting the consent decree. We certainly respect the rights of all the parties, respect the rights of the victims, the rights of the officers, and everybody who's involved. But as stakeholders, as one of 44 cities that is a contract city, we should be, we should have a seat at the table, maybe not Diamond Bar, but some entity that represents us to have a seat at this table so that we can have a say in participating in public safety. And that's my comment for this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowe. Is that an actionable ask?
It's not on the agenda. But you can direct it.
But per comment, is that an actionable ask?
I'd like to agendize that, then. Can I do that?
Yes.
Is it the consensus of the council to place that on a future agenda?
Can you specify, what are you asking?
The agenda item would be to get a report back on the consent decree and the discussions. And if it would be the pleasure of the council to issue a letter on behalf of the council.
And that we have a seat at the table.
And that we have a seat at the table, correct. Thank you.
Do we?
Sure.
Yeah?
Sounds reasonable.
You have consensus.
It's consensus. Thank you, Councilmember Lowe.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Steve Tai.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope that if you're a good golfer, even if you're not a good golfer, come out to the sheriff's annual golf classic. My sources tell me that you might have an opportunity to see Captain Towsey out there, swinging it, you know, doing, off to the right. A lot of bunkers. It's two weeks from yesterday at Western Hills. I'm certain a good time will be had by all. And you can contact the coordinator, Darren Luter, at 909-859-2859 for information. Or Gil Rivera, a man about town, you can reach at 909-967-4525. Again, at Western Hills on October 14th. I think an extra bonus is that this will be done in remembrance of Commander Art Herrera, a lifelong L.A. SD member, and who we lost just recently. So, hope that you can participate in that. And Deputy Scheller, you talk about, you know, this feels like home. Well, you make it feel like home. It was wonderful to see Paisley. I don't think a 10-year-old really enjoys that much attention. But she is, now, if I understand correctly, eight years cancer-free. That's exciting in itself. And it was very interesting to see you as nervous as you were, as nervous as I've never seen you because you just didn't know how it was going to come off. And then you've got proceeds of $16,000. So, clearly, it was a very, very solid event, and a lot of people were glad to be there. And it reminds me of one of my favorite quotes, that coming together is a beginning, staying together is progress, and working together is success. And you had tremendous success. So, thank you very, very much. We wish you continued success every year for Kid Cancer. Good night, and God bless you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Steve Tai. And Mayor Protem Tang.
Thank you. I had the pleasure to meet Deputy Scheller two times last week. One, obviously, is at the Kid Cancer Event. And I have to say that he's also a very talented guitar player to play a national anthem for us, okay? And the second meeting with Deputy Scheller was one of the safety and public safety and security meetings in our community. So, we have a neighborhood gathering together to discuss this issue with Deputy Scheller. And it very much reflects Councilmember Lowe's concern about our public safety. Okay, so I think the conclusion from that meeting, I think, is we should go out and vote. Vote according to the common sense, to vote to change the current laws so that we will have an improvement from the current law system. Because we have done very hard in the community, from our city, from our deputies, to do very best, try to fight crimes. But crime still happens. I still receive reports from residents that they got their windows broken, the car windows broken in front of the house at the evenings, twice last couple weeks. So, it happens. So, they are in a very quiet and nice neighborhood. They still got this intrusion. So, I think we should go out and vote to change the current law system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tang. I'd like to thank staff for today's meeting, wonderful meeting. And thank the community for coming out for Dash for Hope. And as we saw, Deputy Scheller really rocked the National Anthem. That was really cool. And it's so great to see families and kids and everyone coming together. And Mr. and Mrs. Scheller, of course, hosting the event, and your daughter. That was very heartwarming, and we hope to see that again next year. Absolutely. We'll be there to support. And there will be heat wave again this week. And please look out for each other and stay hydrated. And we will see everyone in the wine soiree this Sunday. And State of the City address next Wednesday. Thank you so much, and I'll say good night. And we will call this meeting adjourned at 7:05, 7:06. Thank you.